You got everything turned on?
Okay, put it in the voice.
All right, I'll call the meeting into order if you'll stand and I'll ask Commissioner Gonzalez to lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you this afternoon. First of all, in gratitude, giving you thanks for everything that you do for us, the blessings that you continue to bless us with, Lord, we thank you. We thank you for this opportunity to gather and conduct business to benefit of the community, Lord. We ask you for wisdom and guidance, Lord, in every decision that we make, may it be for the betterment of San Juan County. Amen.
Mr. Totacini, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And I'll need a motion to go into the Board of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Hello, Ms. Colby.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. I just have a little bit of housekeeping to take care of. I'm updating my investment policy. It needs to be reviewed every few years. And I only have a couple of small changes. I am adding one banking institution that we would like to do business with, and that is New Mexico Bank and Trust. And then I am changing the name from Sandia Laboratory to Sunward Federal Credit Union. And the other change was just a formatting change. So those are the only changes I'm making. So I'm asking you to approve Resolution Number 242565, I believe.
242565, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or comments for Ms. Colby? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2425-65.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Then I need a motion to come out of Board of Finance.
Motion to come out of Board of Finance.
Okay.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, so then I'm moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Madam Chair, just one minor addition on new business item number one. Ellen Wayne, Ellen Wayne's gonna co-present with Ms. Megan Collop, but she'll actually read that item off.
Okay. All right. So I need a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I approve the agenda as amended. I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I'll read through those. And the first one is consideration of FY '25 budget adjustment number 12, Resolution Number 242568. Two, consideration for award proposal 242512, comprehensive detainee medical, mental health, or pharmaceutical care to Will Path of Nashville, Tennessee, and Diamond Pharmacy of Indiana, PA. Number three, consideration for award of bid 242517, price agreement for the purchase of bulk galvanized steel corrugated metal pipe to Intermountain Processing and Fabrication Inc. of Farming City, New Mexico. And number four, consideration of Resolution Number 242569, adoption of required community development block grant, annual certification, and commitments. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the four consent agenda items.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So now we'll move on to new business, and the first one, we'll have Ms. Wayne come on up, and Ms. Collop too. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. We're here today to present an update to the county's H cap program, which is the healthcare assistance program. And I believe you have before you in your packets a redline version, which might be quite cumbersome to digest, and also a clean version of the new policy that we're suggesting. So just for everyone's awareness, the H cap program is established through state statute, which recognizes counties as the responsible agency for ambulance transportation, hospital care, or the provision of healthcare to indigent patients domiciled within that county. It also sets forth the guidelines for operating the program and gives counties the ability to define who qualifies as a provider, what services will be covered, and setting income eligibility requirements. So all of those things are within the county's purview. The current policy that we're abiding by, adopted by a previous commission, sets low-income requirements of 200% federal poverty level. Individuals must have limited assets, they have to be resident of the county for at least 90 days, they do not, must not have any insurance, and must not qualify for Medicaid coverage in order to receive H cap funding. H cap is always the payer of last resort. It's essentially filling in a gap for patients who earn too much money to qualify for Medicaid coverage, but too little money to handle the burden of certain necessary medical expenses. So that's what the program essentially, its mission is. With this recommended update, none of the eligibility requirements that I just explained change. That all remains the same in the update before you. Over the years, the county's procedures have changed, though, shifting away from strictly a claims-based process where every single claim had to be reviewed and approved or denied, including beginning in 2021, the county began entering into contracts with providers who see the majority of the county's indigent patients, such as San Juan Regional Medical Center and PMS. So the update before you for your consideration today essentially is a reorganization of the current policy to be more user-friendly, keeping up to date with current law, more clearly defining the duties of patients and the duties of providers, and better aligning with the county's current staffing and practices. There's a Resolution 242526 that if you approve would adopt the policy in your packet. That's what staff is requesting today. And Ms. Collop and Mr. Stark are both here to help answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Wayne or Ms. Collop? And hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I will make the motion to adopt the Resolution 242566, amending and restating the San Juan County Healthcare Assistance Program Policy and Procedure Manual.
I'll second.
I have here a first and a second. Either, is there any more comment or discussion? Okay. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on, and this is about consideration for Valiant Compensation Study. Good afternoon, Ms. Melissa.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Melissa Wood, Deputy HR Officer. I do have on Zoom Kelly and Kim with Valiant, so they will kind of pitch hit if I have any questions or things that come across that maybe we aren't 100% on. But for you, we do have a slight update of documents here, so these are yours. So on the top, you guys have the new recommended salary structures, and then behind that is the way they're allocated out, how each position falls into those structures. So there's not a huge change between what we presented on February 18th as a presentation model to you guys. There was just slight modifications in how we wound up needing to allocate fire and sheriff pay. The full non-exempt exempt structure wasn't exactly fitting the needs of those divisions. So we pulled those out and gave them their own structures that were aligned with those division department heads, and what better meets the needs of those individual departments. The only other modification were just some things. Each department head had time to sit with Valiant, ask them questions, go over any concerns that they had, so we do have an addendum with those changes that were modified in your packet. Again, the only real change to that was the fire structure and a slight modification to the SO structure. With that, the amount, though, that you have for the total to bring everybody up to minimum has slightly changed. We're still under the initial allocation or projection of 200, I lost my email, 282,000, sorry, 582,000, and now it's up to 576.
1,518.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, I lost my email, sorry. So that's where we're at. It's still under our initial projections of what the total allocation was going to be to bring everybody up to the recommended market in this structure for the pay bands, going away from the standard pay step and grade, which is something that's happening across many organizations. It allows a lot more freedom and for members coming into the county and in promotions and increases to be better allocated instead of stuck to, you know, you have to be this particular pay. So with that, I will stand for any questions that you guys may have. I know Mike, did you have a couple of things you wanted to add?
I do, Madam Chair, if this is a good time.
Okay, yes.
So Madam Chair and Commissioners, the reason we're bringing this to you, and I may have, of course, mentioned this previously when this was presented to you, normally when we've done market studies, we're bringing that to you during budget time, right? And that would normally be our first meeting in May is usually our workshop. We're bringing this item to you earlier because this is a big change in terms of basically blowing up our current compensation system, moving from the grade and step system that we've been on for many, many years, and moving, as Ms. Wood indicated, to the salary range structure that we think is going to serve us, we know it's going to serve us better, and serve our employees better, to provide longer runways for growth here in the county, and then a more cohesive way by which we show the structure of where different positions fall. It's just a lot easier to understand, it's a lot easier to kind of comprehend if you're an employee, quite frankly, if you're a member of the public, or even the commission for that matter. I think you've seen our very complicated, thick current system that we use. And so to be able to make those changes and make them effective the first pay period in the fiscal year, which is normally what we do when we bring to you, you know, market increases, proposals for merit and COLA increases, we would propose that those are effective the first pay period in the fiscal year. So for us, this year, that would be July 6th. But to get to that point, from today where we're at till then, this is a huge change, which we require that our enterprise resource system, Tyler Technologies, the maintenance system that we use, we would have to bring in a consultant at approximately $6,000, so there's a small cost to bring a consultant in to work with us to redo our salary tables, to make sure that if you approve this, that this system can be implemented correctly within our system, and most importantly, when it comes to the first pay period in July, that we're paying our employees correctly. And that is always our number one goal and priority, that we're, you know, taking care of our employees and making sure their pay is correct for the services they're providing to the citizens of San Juan County. So that's why this is being brought to you, in essence, a month ahead of schedule. Right now, we're tentatively scheduled, if you were to approve this, for the consultants to come on to the county the last week of April. And so that's the reason for why this is ahead of what we normally would present to you during the budget workshop.
New software? New software? Updated software?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, we would not need to update our software, we would just need to update the structure of the salary tables and all the positions that are behind the scenes that allow for the payroll department to actually pay employees correctly based upon this new scheme and matrix that's being proposed to you, as well as to also include the market increases that are necessary to make this effective.
Madam Chair, for information, what's the state minimum wage?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totacini, I will defer to somebody else, because I think it's 1,250, if I remember correctly, but.
It is 1,250.
My boss is nodding her head yes.
I actually have $12, but I'll defer to our consultants.
It's $12.
I thought it was 1,250.
But I guess with the county, we offer a little higher, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totacini, positions are valued based on what they bring, and so each position is valued on a job description. We do, most of our positions right now are above minimum wage. If not, well, all of them are either paid at or above. We don't have anybody below.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from Ms. Wood?
Looks like, Madam Chair, Kim has a statement she would like.
Okay, go ahead, Kim.
I thought I had better check the minimum wage, and I do see that it looks like maybe it has increased this year, so just increased. Two, I'm looking for it, my eyes aren't as young as they used to be. It looks like they're looking at 1,265, but I'm not seeing that that's been approved yet.
All right. All right. Any other questions or comments? Well, hearing none, then we'll need to have a motion to approve this.
Madam Chair, in consideration to implement Valiant, the compensation study, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I guess we took a look at our essential employees and making sure that people are getting what they're worth, and this is where the compensation study comes in handy. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totacini, that is correct. Yeah, we look across the structure, and then Valiant's role is to look at our positions across all different entities in the nation and different resources that they have to make sure we're comparable both regionally and nationally and paying the positions for what they are valued.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Totacini, I could also add that, you know, part of what they've done for us, and previous consultants we've used, is we're wanting to make sure that we have external equity, that our employees are being paid in similar fashion to like-sized governmental entities for the position and the roles and responsibilities for which they carry, but then also internal equity with all the different positions that they match up and are comparable across the board. And that's the beauty of the system that they put together for us. It's very easy to see and understand what those positions look like and where they fit within these various, various matrices. And it's very visually, very visually appealing and easy to understand, and that's something that we've been trying to do for a long time, is to upgrade and improve our system so folks understand it. That needs to be, it's important. When you're taking a position with an employer, you want to know how you're going to be paid and where you rank and are set according to other positions within that same organization.
Thank you.
That is the tool to be able to see how things are laid out and encourage the employees to strive for more.
It's everything from custodian labor to counselor. It's a long list here in all the different categories, so.
Madam Chair, that, yes, we have a lot of job positions, and our current matrix, like Mr. Stark was saying, is laid out between divisions, so it's really hard for similar positions to kind of get an idea of how they rank in conjunction with other roles. So this is a great update.
Yeah, it really is. Okay. All right. So I have a first and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, next, we will have Mr. Neely talk about Resolution Number 242567.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, good afternoon. Devin Neely, Public Relations Manager, and here before you today for your consideration of Resolution Number 242567 proclaiming the month of April as National County Government Month. Since 1999, NACO, the National Association of Counties, has encouraged counties across the country to actively promote county government programs and services. National County Government Month is celebrated each April by the nation's counties to raise public awareness and understanding about the roles and responsibilities of county government. This month, San Juan County will be celebrating National Counties Month by inviting about 300 high school students to the county complex for Government Day, of which Commissioner Totacini will be joining us for. Additionally, on April the 3rd, which is Thursday, we have more than 57 employees at the Annual Service Awards Luncheon, employees with a combined 625 years of service to the citizens of San Juan County. We request that San Juan County, along with other communities throughout the nation, showcase local area governments, and we ask that you approve Resolution 242567 proclaiming April as National County Government Month here in San Juan County, and with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Neely? Thank you for doing this. So with that, then, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 242567 proclaiming the month of April as National County Government Month.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And thank you, Commissioner Totacini. All right, so with that, we'll move on to reports from the county manager.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As you know, the legislative session has come to a close, and I'm happy to report some good news for San Juan County relative to some capital outlay projects and even some other specific legislation. So I'll start off by indicating that we received, three projects, three projects were funded with capital outlay this year for a total of $9.7 million. We actually represented, when you look at, and they break down the capital outlay bill by county, we ended up with 27% of the funding that was allocated countywide, so a banner year, to say the least. Now, I want to share this news with the caveat that the governor still has until April 11th to make decisions on various bills, and so capital projects could be subject to a line item veto, but I believe that these projects are all probably found in good favor with the governor's office, since our highest award amount was for the Crisis Triad Center, your number one capital outlay project for this year, and our understanding is that $3.5 million was put forth by our local legislators, and then $3.5 million match from the governor's office. So that's very, first time that we've, I think, received funding in that capacity.
That is awesome.
Yes.
Very appreciative of that.
Very much so. The second ranked project for San Juan County, per the ICIP plan, was the Clerk's Office, expansion and renovation and election security upgrade project, and they received the full amount of $2.5 million. So another nice piece of funding coming our way. And last but not least, like I said, assuming we don't see any line item vetoes, EMS Station 6, a project that's been on the books now for three years, and we were able to receive $200,000 to start working on the design of that project. So we're moving the needle with a project that we've been working on for a few years now. So all very, very positive news. So kudos to all of you. I know each and every one of you were advocating in your own ways to get these projects across the finish line and to get our legislators to support them. And then we also received, within House Bill 2, received a notation of. And then we also received, within House Bill Two, received a notation, a line that provides for some funding potentially and certainly prioritization from the New Mexico Department of Transportation for two projects, the Pinion Hills project as well as an overpass in Los Lomas. So we're hopeful that that stays in the bill and that can become reality as well. So it doesn't provide dedicated funding per se, but it does at least put it on the radar and provide some prioritization from NMDOT. So another big win for San Juan County potentially in getting that high priority transportation project funded.
That is a big win, and I saw our legislators today and thanked them in person, so very appreciative of all their hard work. It was a long session.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to recognize all the hard work that Ms. Fortner has put into this. She's been pushing for this for a long, long time, this triage center, and I really appreciate her taking the lead and just keep hammering, keep hammering them. We got here. Good work. Good work.
Thank you. A lot of hard work by our legislators and our staff, too. I know Stephen's been involved and Mike as well, so. Yeah, and Megan. Megan, I think she may have already left. Oh, no, there she is.
She's hiding back there.
So in my time here, this represents the best year ever in terms of capital outlay, so fingers crossed it all goes, gets to the finish line. And, you know, our highest awarded project prior to this year was not that long ago, $3.2 million for the Sheriff's Office helicopter replacement project. But we more than doubled that this year, so yeah, kudos to y'all. Kudos to everybody in this room that makes this happen, and ultimately, the big winners here are the citizens of San Juan County.
That's right.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Just one other update. I had the opportunity to meet with some representatives from the Navo Transitional Energy Company, and they had invited Patricia Dominguez, who is the new statewide director for Teresa, Congresswoman Teresa Ledger Fernandez. Last week, was able to provide her a specific update on the Four Corners Freight Rail projects. She was very interested in that, and that continues to be a high priority for our congressional delegation. That was well received, and certainly some follow-up information that she requested, and so I just want you to be aware of that, that that continues to get pushed as well, and we are getting ready to move into the next phase of that project with the preliminary engineering and the NEPA analysis. In fact, we received a grant agreement for our review a couple weeks ago, in record time. Last time around, it took us 12 months to get a scope of work put together. This time, we've received it in a month, and we hope to receive it back in a pretty quick manner. So we hope we can start work on that soon. We'll have to do an RFP for consulting services, but we'll go through that process and get an engineering consulting company on board and start moving forward with that. So with that, that concludes my report and can stand for any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stark, for continuing to drive that and make sure that we stay on path. And also, you were on KSJE with Stephen as well, talking about that, and so thank you for letting people know, getting the message out there.
You bet. We're happy to do it.
So now, we'll move on to reports from elected officials or department heads. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So recently, we did a recruitment and interview process for our new head pro, general manager of every golf course, and Ryan Easton, did I say that right?
Get it one day.
He is our successful candidate and brings a lot of management skills and communications, very well needed for the golf course. So go ahead and let him tell a little bit about himself.
Okay. Well, welcome. Is it Eston, did you say?
Madam Chair Commissioners, it's pronounced Heston, kind of like Charlton Heston.
We won't forget that.
Been at the golf course already for six years, so I'm excited to move on and move into hopefully some bigger and better things. Moved here six years ago from Montana, been in Idaho, Texas here, and happy to be here.
Well, thank you. What's the best thing about our golf course out there?
Madam Chair, right, now, the best thing is, I think, is the people. We've got a good team right now, so not just them, but our players that play out there as well. We've got a good group, both sides.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for joining, joining us today to introduce yourself and being part of, continuing on, being part of the team. So, thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right.
They got lessons for commissioners, right? They got lessons for commissioners.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. Anybody else, is there? Devin, go right ahead.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, hello again. There seems to be quite a bit of misinformation floating around on social media, and I wanted to clear that up before you this afternoon. You're probably aware that San Juan County Adult Detention Center posts as a matter of public record booking photos and booking information of every detainee at the facility. It seems that a third party somehow scrapes that information from our website and posts it directly to Facebook and to a third-party website. We've had a number of people make accusations that that Facebook page is run by the county. It is not. We have nothing to do with that Facebook page. The only and true location that information is officially posted is by the ADC on that webpage and nowhere else. So we don't control that information. We don't control or condone that information that's spread through Facebook or another dot com website, and we just wanted to make sure that that was very clear, that that was not ours. It's our data that is being disseminated by a third party. So I'll stand for any other questions if you have.
Thank you for that clarification, so that's.
And I believe Mr. Webb is still in the house if you had any other questions.
Are there any problems arising from this outside?
You know, I've heard from the district attorney and some other lawyers in town. I've heard from members of the public defender's office. We have had former detainees stopped by the office and request their photo be removed from that Facebook page. Nothing, nothing serious so far, but we have had people approach me personally and others in our organization and in the office that want their photo taken down, and the reality is we don't have any control over that Facebook page or the associated website.
And Madam Chair, also, I would point out, I went to the website and looked at it. The information that's posted on the ADC's website, you have to actually search. You can search for a name, and then it comes up. It's not like it's a photo array of every single person who's in the facility, so ours is a little more restricted than what's going on on Facebook.
Oh, okay.
Correct. You can search by date, whether a detainee is in custody or not, and by name, but the presentation of the information is significantly different, but the matter remains that that is all public information and available through a public information request, and in lieu of that, we've made that available through that website, through the jail and through our software provider. And we've actually added a disclaimer noting that we don't have control over that. I believe the company is publicjailrecords.com is responsible for the reposting of that information, so we've added that as a disclaimer to the official San Juan County Adult Detention Center webpage.
Well, thank you for that, because it has been a lot, a subject of a lot of conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other department heads that would like to give report? Seeing none, then, right now, we'll go into comments and input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, to subjects that the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. If you have a comment, just go ahead and come up to the lectern and speak to the commission. All right, seeing none, then, I'll go ahead and I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
My move that we go into the closed executive session to discuss the disposal of real property pursuant to Section 10-15-1, H8 leasing of the San Juan County Industrial Park.
I'll say it.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we'll go into closed session. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm ready. We have returned from the closed session. The matters discussed in the closed session were limited to those specified in the motion for closure.
Do you have a motion to go back?
Yeah, it's you need to come out of the closed session.
Oh, I move that we sorry, I missed that paragraph. I move that we go out of closed session and go back into open session.
I got a first and second all in favor?
Now, I have to read. We have returned from the closed session. The matters discussed in the closed session were limited to those specified in the motion for closure.
So do I need a motion now? I don't need a motion. Okay, so.
Okay, thank you.